I got it. Then it'll work anyway. This is really kind of our last meeting anyway. Oh, no, we had the 28th.
Okay. Well, this was our lunch.
Well, yeah. Right, right.
We go to Bob's Clam Pub. That place is famous. And we go every year. We go every year for this. What I did is I brought that up. I just get a clam for my son. By the time I got home and everything, they were all slagging already.
Yeah.
Good evening. Welcome to our regular Board of Ed meeting Tuesday, October 13, 2015. My name is Tom Lambert, Vice Chairman of the Watertown Board of Education. And with the absence of Board Chair Mrs. Crotty, who could not attend this meeting tonight, I will be acting chairman for our meeting. Thank you. Onto Item A. We will convene this regular Board of Education meeting Tuesday, October 13 at 7:30. Onto Item B. Salute to the flag. Please rise and join us for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic of which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Onto Item C. Roll call. Mrs. Davidson, could you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Wilford. Ms. Dronalvy. Mr. Mikowski?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Ms. Crotty? Mr. Vintenzi?
Here.
Ms. Rosa?
Here.
Mr. Gamberdella?
Here.
Ms. Mancini?
Here.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson. Onto Item D. Minutes. Board of Education regular meeting of September 28, 2015. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Education approve of the minutes from the September 28, 2015, regular meeting.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any exceptions, additions, or changes to those minutes? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? No abstentions. Thank you. Motion passes. Onto Item E. Award recognition. Before I turn this over to Dr. Carnerola for the award ceremony, please note that at the end of the awards ceremony, Item E1 and E2, we will recess for 10 minutes for pictures by anyone who wishes to take them. Dr. Carnerola.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Tonight, we have Students of the Month from Judson Elementary School with us. It isn't very easy to become a Judson Elementary School Student of the Month. Our Students of the Month are based on not only doing well academically, but also on being good citizens, helpful to each other, of course, being helpful to their teacher, and being all-around exemplars of what we would like all of our students to show. We don't have a few of them here with us tonight, but they're all incredibly cute. For those of you who I didn't get out to because you came out in after I came out, I want to tell you not to be nervous. When I call your name, you're going to come right up here and shake our hand, and then go back and sit down. It is no big deal. That way, right now. So we have some 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders here with us from Judson. In Grade 3, we have Garrett Trudeau. Garrett, are you here? Ryan Walsh. And Liam Murphy. In Grade 5, we have Tyler Wilksman. And also, I don't think we have Riel Trudeau in Grade 5. Also tonight, we have a high school student with us. I'm going to call Mr. Jones to assist us in this.
Thank you, Dr. Carnerola and Board of Education. It is with pleasure that I recognize a Watertown High School student. She is a current senior. Her name is Miriam Hafiz, and she represented both Watertown High School and the state of Connecticut in June at the Congress of Future Medical Leaders in Boston. She was able to see surgeries. She was able to see a lot of live action and is recognized as a leader across our state by, and I want to make sure I say this right, National Academy of Future Physicians and Medical Scientists. So congratulations, Miriam Hafiz.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
At this time, we will now be in recess for 10 minutes for pictures. Thank you.
So we'll have Grade 3 come up first? We'll do it by grade, or is not too many going to do it all together? What do you think, Mrs. Scully? All right, so let's do it all together. That'll be probably a better picture. So everyone who received an award from Judson tonight, come on up. Bring your award. And Mrs. Scully.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
Yeah.
(inaudible).
Yeah, yeah, true. That's hilarious.
Jill, I think. No. Assistant, no. I think Jill is probably the next. You better talk to her. Doc Jan, me, I don't know.
We didn't need 10 minutes.
We're ahead of schedule.
All right.
That's it.
(inaudible).
Okay.
Thank you again.
Looks like we're back in session a little early here. It's 8:38. We will start. Or, excuse me, 7:38. Pushing the hour away. Thank you very much. We're back on Item F. Report from Student Council Representative Karina Mancini. Karina?
Thank you. Good evening, all. Here are this week's updates. At John Trumbull Primary School, students in writing classes learn techniques from mentor authors that will help them express how they want the reader to feel. In math class, students are writing addition and subtraction sentences and solving story problems. At Polk, the first student council meeting of the year was held and went great. Also, three of the 5th grade classes met with their book discussion partners from Watertown High School. In Judson, the 45 Chromebooks donated by the PTO are being put to good use throughout the school. Judson is very grateful to the PTO for this donation. At Swift, the mentoring program is beginning again this year, which pairs adult volunteers from the Simon Company and Webster Bank with select students. This week was the annual Mentor-Mentee Breakfast, where students and mentors got to know each other. Swift Clubs are up and running again, with Leo Club selling pink bracelets for the Susan G. Coman Foundation, Student Council electing officers, and Newspaper Club working on their first edition. Also, the Garden Club cleaned up the courtyard gardens. Woodshop, Lego, and Robotics Clubs are meeting each week, and peer helpers and peer leaders are beginning soon. At Watertown High School, the College Information Night last week was a big success. There was a great turnout of parents that were able to speak to representatives about the application process and financial aid. WHS will be hosting a Career in College Fair coming up on October 22 at 6 o'clock in the gym. That's all for this week's updates.
Thank you, Karina. We're going to move on to Item G. Superintendent's Recommendations and Report. Dr. Carnerola.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. I draw your attention to two grants that are on the agenda this evening. One is a grant from the Watertown Foundation valued at $1,700, and that was obtained by the Watertown Music Boosters Association for the purchase of six replacement piano keyboards, much needed at the Swift Piano Lab. Once in a while, I get lucky, and the person who wrote it is sitting in the audience. I'd like to thank Frances Palmer, who's actually a math teacher at Swift, but did the writing of this grant for us with the Watertown Foundation. Thank you very much, Ms. Palmer. Also, another grant from the Watertown Foundation, also for the same dollar amount, $1,700, for the purchase of ORF instruments for Judson and Polk Schools. And Mrs. Anna Jed, the music teacher at Swift, and also our district-wide coordinator, wrote that grant. Also, there were some questions that were asked of Mr. Folds, the Food Services Director, at the last board meeting that we promised answers to this time. I handed out some averages here that I'll just speak to to make a little bit more sense. Specifically, the question was asked of Mr. Folds' average dollar amounts that students were spending on breakfast and on lunch. And if you look down this chart, you see it's broken into breakfast, lunch, à la carte, and then adult. He made a separate category for adult purchases. That's people like me who happen to stop in and get lunch at Swift, for example, or teachers that come down and eat lunch, anyone who is not a student, basically. The total of sales you see for the year for breakfast were $60,046, and so with 180 days of operation, that averages out at $3359 a day. This is where you have to look a little bit closely at the grid. Our total number of students is the next line, so that's 2,854 as of the time this was printed. So if you were to average it over all students, it would be 12 cents per student, but all students are not buying breakfast. So if you average it over the daily average of students buying breakfast, that's 192. So on the average, 192 students have been buying breakfast, and the average sales for breakfast, therefore, are $1.74. I broke that down a little bit further today when I spoke with Mr. Folds, just to put it in another light for you. That means that from K to 5, they spent an average of $1.55 on breakfast. I'm sorry, excuse me. Back that up. The cost of breakfast at K to 5 is $1.55. And the cost of breakfast is $2 from 6 through 12, grade 6 through 12. So that average, then, of 174 falls right in the middle of what the average cost of breakfast is. Same thing, you go down the lunch column, we have total yearly sale of $771,101. Average daily sales, then, for the 180 days were $4,283.89. Again, if you average that over the entire student population, that would be an average of $1.50 spent on lunch. However, on the average, we have 1,298 of our students, a little bit less than half, that are buying lunch on a daily basis. And that would make our sales count for lunchtime $3.30, which is actually above the cost of lunch at both kindergarten and 6 through 12. The cost of lunch from K to 5 is $2.75. And the cost for lunch from grade 6 through 12 is $3.25. So that $3.30 is actually a little bit above the cost of lunch from 6 through 12. À la carte, you see students spent about an average of $0.87 a day. Most à la carte items are between $60 and $0.90, so they're not very expensive. They are things like baked chips. Sometimes they're, they just buy an apple. They may buy just a carrots, like you saw here, some mixed vegetables. I saw some pretty popular, different things that I was surprised students were picking up as à la carte items when I was at Swift last week. And I'm just speaking specifically to that one because I happened to go down to the cafeteria right after Mr. Folds' presentation here, and I went down to get lunch myself. And one of the items that are selling very well at Swift are containers full of little black beans. It's like lentils. The kids love them. So I'm not what we might have spent à la carte money on when I was in high school, but we didn't have smart choices back then, I guess. The average, in adult sales, we had $54,537, and that would make the average, again, if you put it all over, all of the adults, and again, that's the people working here, all of the people that work here don't necessarily get lunch every day, it would be $0.87 apiece. But still, the adult sales are bringing in decent overall profit. And so our total year sales, then, $1,088,799. I think that answers everything that he had asked. If you have any other questions right now, I'll do my best to answer them based on meetings I had with David and these numbers. If any of this doesn't make sense, you want clarification. Couple of things. I wanted to mention that I was at the mentor breakfast that Swift held, that annual breakfast, so we're the majority of central office administrators, the high school principal, a counselor from the high school, also, obviously, because we love to bring the program from the middle school students up through the high school. It was very well attended. We're lucky to have some great partnerships with some of the local businesses who took time out of their day to come, in some cases, meet new students who are there just beginning to mentor, and in some cases, to continue on the relationship with the students they've already begun to mentor. And I saw that we had more mentors there this year, so I hope there's been a lot of effort put into reaching further out into the community, and I've done some of that also along with the administrators out in my travels, trying to drum up some support for it. And certainly, if you're watching this at home on public access and you're willing to be a mentor for our students in grades 6, actually 6 through 12, because we are looking to be able to have some job shadowing at the high school, also, please contact me or one of our schools. We will take everyone who's interested. We have a lot more students who would be interested in doing it. I also visited Swift last week, as I think everyone knows. I had a very brief visit at John Trumbull the week before, and we'll just leave that at that. I had visited music before my unfortunate quick leave of John Trumbull. We had our first full professional development day since August, this past Friday. That went very well. I'd like to thank the administrators, most of whom are here tonight, for doing the majority of the planning that went into those days, so that the board knows, I'm sure we'll be talking about this more and more often as we go through this year, much of what was done at the high school was related to NIASC, which is the point they are at in the process. They've begun writing, they're putting together the evidence and writing of the reports. So thank you to Mr. Jones and to the two NIASC co-chairs, Ms. Lewis and Ms. Kugler, and also Dr. Parlato, who helped get some of that going at the high school. Since... Are you still giving me trouble? I won't read any more of the report, but I think I remembered everything that I wanted to say anyway, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Dr. Carnerola, for your report. Item H is public participation. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Please state your name and address.
My name is Christopher Arm. I live at Two Kent Terrace in Warwickville.
Could you go up to the podium, please?
Arm, A-R-M. My daughter, Lillian, is a 1st grade teacher at John Trumbull, and she still does not have a full-time teacher. I wanted to find out what the status was on this, because we were told that the full-time teacher was supposed to have started yesterday. That's my first question.
Would you wish to address it?
I'll answer it if you feel well. Thank you.
Dr. Carnerola.
Actually, that was all I wanted to say, so thank you for coming up to the podium. We went through the entire process to hire a teacher. The teacher was sent to me for interview. The references were checked. The teacher came in, accepted the job, went home, had something unfortunate go on in her personal life, and called the next day and rescinded. And it was actually the day after this last board meeting, because you may remember at the last board meeting, I said we were happy that we had hired a teacher that was supposed to start actually October 5.
Okay.
So they have quickly gone back through again, and I believe it is tomorrow, not tomorrow afternoon. It's Wednesday afternoon. I have my calendar out. The person is coming.
Okay. So there's another interview on Wednesday, tomorrow. Who's that?
Dave, they're sending the final candidate.
Okay.
Sorry, and I'm speaking as if it's Monday night. If it's not tomorrow, I'd have to look at the calendar. It's Thursday. I have the next two days scheduled this morning.
Okay. And the second thing I wanted to ask was, we recently changed the bus route that my daughter was on, and now she's participating two days a week here, oh, sorry, at Trumbull, at the Y Program. My wife is due in January with our third, and currently, the closest bus stop to our house is at Warwick Road and Whispering Hill. We'd like to see if it's possible to change that bus stop to the corner of Kent Terrace and Whispering Hill?
That we have to do through the office. I can't help you with that tonight because I have to call the bus company.
Okay, because we were told that we had to come here to ask.
Call my office and ask.
Okay.
And I have the information, but if you want to email it to me tonight?
Okay.
If that's possible, it'll make it quicker, and I'll forward it over.
Sure.
But not me, and she's not here this evening, but I'll take care of it. Send it to me. I'll send it to the bus company, and I'll get back to you as soon as they get back to me.
All right, can I have your email address?
WatertownSuper.
Okay.
All together. WatertownSuper@watertown.edu.
All right. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? Hearing none. We'll move on to Item I. Report from the chair. Because of the absence of Mrs. Crotty, there will be no report tonight. Move on to Item J. Committee reports. Curriculum Instruction Committee, Mrs. Kathy Rinaldi is absent. There will be no report from her. Policy and Labor Committee, Mr. Victor Vincenzi, Chair.
No report.
Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Thomas Lambert. No report. Facilities PBC Operations Committee, Mr. Lambert. No report. Governance and Community Engagement Committee, Mr. Robert Mikowski, Chair.
No report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski. Onto Communications. Item K. There are no communications to report tonight. And we'll move on to Item L. Action items. By consent. Tonight, we have three separate gifts to be approved by consent. We'll take them separately. And the first item is Item La. Watertown Music Boosters Association donated a SMART board valued at $1,700 to be used in the choral room at Watertown High School. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move that the Board of Education accept a donation from the Watertown Music Boosters Association of a SMART board valued at $1,700 to be used in the choral room at Watertown High School.
Thank you. Tom, is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you very much. Is there all in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Second item is Item LB. Charles Brown donated a Kohler Campbell piano valued at $1,000 to be used in the piano lab at Swift Middle School. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of Education accept a donation from Mr. Charles Brown of a Kohler Campbell piano valued at $1,000 to be used in the piano lab at Swift Middle School. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of Education accept a donation from Mr. Charles Brown of a Kohler Campbell piano valued at $1,000 to be used in the piano lab at Swift Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Vincenzi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Third item is LC. Ms. Kathy Keating donated ORF books and materials valued at $500 to be used at John Trumbull Primary School, Judson, and Polk Elementary Schools. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Education accept a donation from Ms. Kathy Keating of ORF books and materials valued at $500 to be used at John Trumbull Primary School, Judson, and Polk. And...
Tonight, we have three separate gifts to be approved by consent. We'll take them separately. And the first item is Item La. Watertown Music Boosters Association donated a SMARTboard valued at $1,700 to be used in the Coral Room at Watertown High School. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that the Board of Education accept a donation from the Watertown Music Boosters Association of a SMARTboard valued at $1,700 to be used in the Coral Room at Watertown High School.
Thank you. Tom, is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you very much. Is there all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Second item is Item LB. Charles Brown donated a Kohler Campbell Piano valued at $1,000 to be used in the piano lab at Swift Middle School. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Education accept a donation from Mr. Charles Brown of a Kohler Campbell Piano valued at $1,000 to be used in the piano lab at Swift Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Vincenzi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McCauskey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Third item is LC. Ms. Kathy Keating donated ORF books and materials valued at $500 to be used at John Trumbull Primary School, Judson, and Polk Elementary Schools. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Education accept a donation from Ms. Kathy Keating of ORF books and materials valued at $500 to be used at John Trumbull Primary School, Judson, and Polk Elementary Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Gambardella. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Mr. Vincenzi. All in favor? Now, any discussion? Excuse me. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. It is recommended that the Board accept these generous donations and letters of thanks to be sent to the donors. Onto Item M, Future Agenda Items and Board Members Comments. Do any board members have any agenda items or comments? Thank you. Hearing none, we'll move on to our second, Public Participation. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Please state your name and address if we don't know it by now.
Fran Palmer, 220 Middlebury Road. I just wanted to mention that Kathleen Keating is my sister, and the reason this happened is because of Anna Jed. My daughter and I decided to help my sister clean out her garage after teaching for 37 years in Bristol at the first grade. She bought all these ORF instruments, and they were sitting there, and I said, "Cath, you gotta get rid of them." "Where?" You know, your heart goes out. Anna came over to her house, went through all of these items, and this is where they're now in use. So I wanted to give Anna some credit for coming and talking somebody into parting with their memories.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Palmer. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Thank you, Mr. Vincenzi. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Arseni. We are now adjourned at 7:56. Thank you.
It's a record.
It's a record.